Thank you, Mr. Braswell. May I have a motion to approve and adopt the agenda as is? Motion by Ms. Blaylock, now second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Seven, zero. And as just a reminder, please silence your cell phones and I'd like to thank Deputy Wine for being here with us this evening. Moving on to item 2.01, public hearing, we have none. And then moving on to 3.01, readers theater, Ms. Flannard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. During the 2014-2015 school year, Spotsylvania County teachers began implementing the Benchmark Literacy Program in grades three through five. This school year, implementation began in kindergarten through second grade. Benchmark literacy uses a multi-level, small-group approach to instruct students in reading using various comprehension and metacognitive strategies. Teachers were excited to receive an abundance of multi-level fiction and nonfiction books for their literacy instruction. The materials they have received have given teachers the ability to meet individual reading levels of every student in their classroom. Readers' theater is one of the students' favorite components of the program. The opportunity to assume a character's role and read a part in a play together is exciting for both students and teachers. This evening, staff from Battlefield Elementary School are excited to share with you some of the highlights and the results of implementing Benchmark Literacy. As a part of their presentation, students from Ms. McIntosh's fourth-grade classroom at Battlefield Elementary School would like to demonstrate Reader's Theater to you with a story that they have selected. If we could please welcome Principal Ms. Suzie Fines to the podium to introduce the highlight.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Baker. We are so proud to bring you some of our talented fourth-grade Battlefield readers tonight, and they are super excited to read for you. Reader's Theater is a popular, very popular component of our recently implemented Benchmark Literacy series. Our reading specialist, Ms. Ashton, will provide you with a very brief summary of reading instruction using this resource.
Ms. Flannard kind of took some of our PowerPoint. So, I'll just review it really quick. But we began implementation last year in grades three through five, and this year, grades two through, K through two also implemented the program. And the series focuses on small-group guided reading with very limited time in a whole-group setting. Each unit focuses on a metacognitive and a comprehension strategy, and these strategies are introduced as a whole group, and then the strategies are carried over into their small groups. So, the texts are very carefully selected to have that ability. It has multiple copies of many titles of varying levels for small-group instruction. The first two weeks of each unit are spent in small-group instruction where the students are paired with other students who have similar reading levels. And then the third week of each unit, there's a Reader's Theater that has multi-level text. So, your reading groups change for the third week, and children get to interact with other students, which is really phenomenal to watch. And the Reader's Theater Week is a favorite for all of the children at Battlefield.
Yes, we are not allowed to skip Reader's Theater Week because we will hear about it for the whole week. These are some of the reasons why our teachers love Benchmark Literacy. It has greatly improved our students' fluency and accuracy last year, especially when you get to mix up the reading groups, and the lower kids can hear the higher kids' fluency and accuracy. We love the amount of nonfiction and high-interest books, the posters that go with the reading series and the whole group instruction, and they help the students to connect and keep them engaged, especially with the photography and all the illustrations in the leveled readers. They are in awe, and all the sidebar information, too. They really like that. The short, concise, targeted skills on the posters, the repetition of lessons, they were great for our low readers last year because we were able to really hit the skills for two straight weeks. And the making connections across text activity during the second week of instruction. The students loved working together on this activity and going back to the stories and seeing all the different connections that they could make from both stories. Okay. My class is going to read The Gingerbread Boy Uptown starring, you guys can come up? And this is in order. Ms. Grace Berry is Mary. And then Lucas, such places, Kamaria. There you go. Lucas Green is Juan, and then Kamaria Grisby is the narrator. Ryan Hall is The Gingerbread Boy. Seth Hunter is Joe. Amber Ignuto is Tyrone. Maya Johnson is Anita. Ms. Simotowski, standing in for Brandon, is Tony. Tanisha Osborne is a customer, and Logan Peel is the old man.
On the corner of 23rd Avenue, a store placed a little bakery with lots of goodies. Customers of all shapes, sizes, and colors flock to Joe and Mary Bank's shop to save you the tasty treats. Tyrone, their twelve-year-old son, often lent a hand before he went to school.
Tyrone, we're running out of our famous chocolate doughnuts mother with rainbow sprinkles.
I'm way ahead of you, Mom. I just made two dozen more chocolate doughnuts covered with sprinkles, another dozen chocolate eclairs, and three dozen oatmeal raisin cookies.
And I just made a batch of cream puffs, two trays of walnut brownies, and five piping hot pans of banana bread.
You love the smell, can't do tell those pies and tarts really ring our bells. And there's nothing as sweet as a blueberry muffin, so fresh, so hot, right out of your oven.
Whatever you want, you'll find it right here at Banks Bakery, open 24/7. Just form a line to the right, and we'll take your orders.
Come on, Tyrone, help me fill the shelves. Our customers are really hungry this morning.
Sure, Dad, I'll help you stock the shelves, but then I need to catch the bus to school. I have to hand in my science report, so I can't be late.
Tyrone, before you go, look inside that small oven behind you. There's something in there that I think will put a gigantic smile on that handsome face of yours.
Yes, our boy is handsome, considerate, polite, charming, and he plays a decent game of basketball. Well, you know what they say, like father, like son.
Tyrone finished putting all the baked goods on the shelves. Then he opened the oven door. Out popped the most amazing gingerbread boy cookie he had ever seen, and it was in the shape of a boy, and it talked.
Yo, Tyrone, step off and give the gingerbread boy some space. I love to dance, so get out of my face. I do the gingerbread boy boogie like you've never seen. Watch me slide on the floor, I'm a dancing machine.
You're alive?
Mom, Dad, come quickly. The gingerbread boy jumped out of the oven and is now breakdancing on the floor.
Oh, my, it's true, there's a gingerbread cookie dancing on the floor of our bakery.
And that's not all, he raps.
Yeah, I'm a hip-hop cookie and eyes, you can see I got bling, I got style, and no one moves like me. I got raisin eyes and gumdrop nose, chocolate chip hands and diamond on my toe. All the people love me because I'm a real treat, word is I'm one fat cookie that rocks to a beat.
Dancing rap and cookie, and he looks so good, let's grab him before he leaves the hood.
Hey, you and the party vibe, I have to go, see, I'm too cool and you're too slow.
The gingerbread boy opened a sack of flour and flung it toward the ceiling fan.
Whoosh!
It buzzed and flour swirled through the bakery as he raced out the door. He scurried down the street laughing and ducked to a small grocery store.
Look, Juan, a gingerbread boy has just came into our grocery store, and he's breakdancing on top of the pineapples, and now he's doing the mango on the mango.
See, yes, he is, and what a fabulous-looking cookie. He's wearing a gold chain around his neck. I have never seen a cookie wearing a gold chain around, a gold chain. He must be famous or something.
Don't just stand there sweeping the floor, I want that gingerbread boy, and I want him now.
I could use a little something to eat myself. I haven't had anything since the delectable taco beans and rice you made for dinner last night.
Oh, little cookie, how would you like to be our guest for lunch and dessert?
I know I look good, and I know I look sweet, but this is one smart cookie you are never going to eat.
The gingerbread boy crushed several large red tomatoes and curled them at Juan and Anita. And Anita, the barrage of tomatoes left a couple a red, juicy mess.
Hey, you and the party vibe, I have to go, see, I'm too cool and you're too slow.
Juan and Anita chased the cookie out of the store and onto the crowded sidewalk. They ran into Joe, Mary, Tyrone, and the customers from the bakery, all covered with flour.
Hey, leave my gingerbread cookie alone. The gingerbread boy is mine from the gumdrop nose to the sparkling diamond on his big tooth.
But he ran into our grocery store. He's our gingerbread cookie now, and we're going to eat him.
I think that cookie is special for Tyrone. If anyone's going to eat him, it will be my son and only my son.
Well, you better just walk back to your bakery and make another gingerbread cookie. This one belongs to us.
What's all the fuss? What about us? We want a piece of him, too. He's big enough, not that tough, so let's break him up, and I'll have you, too.
Get your own cookie, the bakery sells lots of them.
While everyone tried to decide who would eat the cookie, the gingerbread boy zipped down the block to Tony's pizzeria. He immediately started to dance on top of the pepperoni pizza.
Hey, you crazy gingerbread cookie, what are you doing dancing on my pizza pies?
I love to dance on sauce and cheese. It's so much cheese and sauce I can spin with ease.
You're ruining my pizzas with all that dancing, but I must say, you're the most talented gingerbread cookie I have ever seen. I think I might have to keep you here in my pizza shop. Let me get you.
Hey, you and the party vibe, I have to go, see, I'm too cool and you're too slow.
You wacky cookie, when I catch you, I'm going to make a pizza with a gingerbread cookie on top and gobble it down.
You might be good at making pies, but how would you like a few in your eyes?
The gingerbread boy started to throw the pizzas at Tony. He knocked Tony's chef hat off his shiny bald head. Then the gingerbread boy bolted out of the shop.
You nutty gingerbread cookie, now my pizzeria is covered with cheese, sausage, peppers, and pepperoni. I'll eat you if it's the last thing I do. Come back here.
Tony chased the cookie into the street, where he was joined by Tyrone, his parents, the customers, and Juan and Anita.
My grandma can run faster than you, and she's a cookie that's a hundred and two.
Hey, you and the party vibe, I have to go, see, I'm too cool and you're too slow.
The mischievous cookie took round refuge in an alley where he met an elderly man sat sitting at the small table with a checkerboard on it.
Hey there, are you that gingerbread cookie everyone's talking about? I always fool himself and like to cause trouble, and it's disrespectful.
Yeah, old man, what you heard is for real. I'm the best cookie going, and that's the deal. I can dance, I can rap, yeah, I'm the main man, and I can do anything better than you can.
So, I guess that means you can beat me at checkers? Would you like to play a game, or do you have somewhere to go?
The alley looked like a safe place to hide from his pursuers, and the gingerbread boy couldn't pass up an opportunity to show the man how good he was at checkers.
That's like a friendly game of checkers, but if you brag it by yourself all the time and throw things at folks, you'll never have any friends.
I don't need people. People need me, and I just beat you three games out of three.
Looks like you're a sharp cookie. All right, no one's ever gonna eat you. You got everything going for you, except maybe this.
The man opened his mouth and revealed a gold tooth. The gingerbread boy's eyes opened wide, he liked how the gold tooth shined.
I love that bling, I love that shine, no matter what, it's going to be mine.
Suddenly, everyone who was looking for the gingerbread boy entered the alley.
Oh, no, it's time for me to go.
Hump inside my mouth, I'll take care of them while you hide.
The gingerbread boy hesitated at first, but he couldn't resist taking a closer look at the man's gold tooth. He leaped inside the man's mouth, just as Tyrone and the others approached. They demanded to know if the man had seen the cookie.
Excuse me, old man, but I'm looking for my gingerbread cookie.
He's mine, that cookie is mine.
No, it is, it certainly is not. That cookie belongs to my son, Tyrone.
The gingerbread boy belongs to all of us. No one person deserves such a fantastic cookie.
Please, there's no need to argue over a obnoxious cookie. How dare you say that about my cookie? It's true, I heard him in the bakery before he dusted all here with flour. I saw him in the store right before he threw trails at Juan and Anita, and it would take Tony days to clean up the pepperoni plaster all over his pizzeria.
The old man is right, that cookie has insulted all of us and caused us nothing but trouble.
But he looks so yummy and scrumptious.
Go home, go back to your shop, and go to school. Believe me, you are much better off without that cookie.
You're right, sir, I've been spending so much time chasing the gingerbread boy that I forgot to hand in my science project.
And I forgot all about my spinach pizzas in the oven.
And Joe and I forgot about our hot cross buns in the stove.
My buns are burning.
And Juan and I left our fruits and vegetables unattended.
Come on, everyone, free pizza back at my place. We don't need that troublesome cookie.
Thanks, Tony, we'll help you clean up. And I'll make you a new cookie, Tyrone, one that doesn't dance and rap.
Tyrone headed off to school, Joe, Mary, Juan, Anita, Tony, and the customers made their way to Tony's pizzeria. The old man opened his mouth, the gingerbread boy stuck his head out.
You see, Dad, I told I would take care of them. All I have to do is take care of you.
You took care of him, and that was grand. Now, how does the gingerbread boy fit in your plan?
That's easy. I said, "Please shut my mouth while you're still inside."
Hey, you and the party vibe, I have to go, see, I'm too cool and you're too, hey!
Old man snapped his mouth shut before the cookie could slip out. The gingerbread boy pleaded with the man to let him out, but to no avail, from a man to begin to chew and crunch and chew and crunch until the gingerbread boy was inside his stomach.
And that's the way the gingerbread cookie crumbles. You got bling, you can dance, and even rap, but you still have to have good mirrors of the checkerboard table.
Can I just say what awesome readers you all were? You had the crowd laughing. That's because you were reading with feeling and excitement and your fluency. We could hear what you were saying, it was great. And you guys are, all I can say, awesome readers. Good job, all of you.
Madam Chair, I saw a few proud and smiling faces out there, so I would like to ask the teachers, parents, grandparents to please stand. Thank you for a job well done.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to now move on to item 4.01, Virginia Living State of Education 2015 Top High School Recipient.
Thank you. Virginia Living State of Education, a special bound-in supplement to Virginia Living's October 2015 issue celebrates excellence and innovation in Virginia schools. Virginia Living State of Education includes Top High Schools and Colleges 2015 list of more than 150 programs in public and private high schools and four- and two-year colleges leading the way in innovation across the state. Virginia's Living's Top High Schools and Colleges 2015 recognizes schools for excellence and innovation in six categories: arts and humanities, science, math and technology, fine and visual arts, and capital improvements, athletics, and special needs. After a thorough review of each school's program and accomplishments, Virginia Living's editors selected Massaponics High School as a top high school for fine and visual arts. Massaponics High School recent fine arts and visual accomplishments include being the only high school in Virginia to be a Virginia State Honors Band three years in a row, the 2015 state champion in serious interpretation, and 2015 state champion in humorous interpretation, and ribbon winners in numerous art shows, including the 2014 Virginia School Boards Association Northeastern Region High School Art Winner. We would like to recognize the fine and visual arts staff and the administration at Massaponics High School. If we could have come forward, Dr. Joe Pazani, Principal. Stephen Singer, also Theater teacher. Patricia Atkinson, Art Teacher. Rachel Bailey, Art Teacher. Carter Corbin, also Art Teacher. Cory Cook, Band Teacher. James Forrie, Orchestra. And Shannon Forrie, Chorus. Congratulations on this great achievement and for your dedication to the students of Massaponics High School.
And if we could continue with our recognitions and awards with 4.02, Dr. Baker.
Thank you. I think that the School Board is well aware, and many, if not all, were able to either attend our opening convocation celebration this year, which was the first of its kind or of its new kind, depending on the perspective. And it was something that the superintendent, I really pushed on to our staff. And during the course of the summer, we had a committee that was put together to try and help shape this opening celebration and convocation, which really was to promote and reinforce our mission statement and our vision for the school division, but also to bring folks together in a spirit of fellowship to celebrate not only the many accomplishments that we can all be proud of, but also to look forward to a new school year. And in the course of that, we had a committee that came together on their own time, most of those folks not on contract during the summer, as well as many dedicated teachers and staff and students who helped to put together the program that we witnessed, including the guest speaker. And tonight, I had asked that we just give them a thank you for that because we have received, I think, over about 900 surveys back from our staff across the school division, and the overwhelming majority of those have been extremely positive and also have provided some really good feedback on how we can continue to open this way in the future and how to enhance that. But I would like to call out the folks that are here who were a part of that committee, and many who did work behind the scenes to prepare students and staff to welcome all of our folks back. Renee Daniels and Sarah Calverick were the co-chairs of the committee. And the following folks, if they are here, I'll call their names to please come up, who were not only on the committee, but we had some who actually were spending time with students to get them ready to do things such as the video and performances and sound and many of the things that helped to make the opening a great success. Jean Bergeron. Mark Darden. Bill Parker. Kimberly Kemp. Matthew Arman Trout. Jennifer Toit. Christina Peck. Marcy Fields. Erin Noe. And Cory Cut. Again, it's a selfish moment of mine, but I want to thank each of you for what you did to take your time and lend your talents to this opening celebration and Heather Hanschen. Sorry, wasn't on the list. I didn't forget. In addition, there are many students who, folks who attended and saw were involved in this, and probably too many to be able to name all of the names, but I'd like to put a shout out to all the many student volunteers who made the program work. So, thank you, and I'll come around.
And I'm going to go ahead and say thank you as well to all of the people who helped with convocation. It was a wonderful event, and I have heard feedback as well, all positives. So, y'all did a great job. Thanks so much. Okay, moving on to item 5.01, public comments. Dr. Martin.
Good evening. The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time should their five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Our first speaker is Nicole Waddie.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Baker, members of the Board. My name is Nicole Waddie. My address is 17610 Waddie Lane. I'm in the Livingston District. I'd like to thank, first off, Mr. Laura for his years of service to our district since he is not running again for the board position. A mother of five children in the Spotsylvania School County system, four of them are currently in the system, one to be joining his brothers and sisters in a couple of years. And I have called on Mr. Laura many times for help and advice throughout the years when I have had issues with them. And I would just like to publicly announce to the board that I do have a strong vested interest in the school board based on the fact that I do have five children that are traveling through the school system. And I want to make sure that they are in a good school system so that they can be productive in the community once they are finished in the school system. That being said, I am running as a write-in candidate for the Livingston District School Board Office.
Madam Chair, that's all of the speakers that signed up.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Is there anyone else in the audience that would care to speak to us this evening? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments and move on to item 5.02, Board Member Comments. And I'm going to start with Ms. Grant today.
I want to start out by saying that the Battlefield Elementary School readers were also very enthusiastic at saying the Pledge of Allegiance. It was the most enthusiastic I've ever heard, and they did a fantastic job with that. I was informed at an earlier meeting that we had this evening that Ray Laura has only five meetings left before he gets to enjoy his retirement. And I just wanted to start practicing, so I want to ask all the principals and assistant principals out in the audience to stand up so we can give you a round of applause for your appreciation of your service. give you a round of applause for your appreciation of your service.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Mr. Laura.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two items that I would like to share with everyone. Item number one, I just finished reading this book that I've been reading for a while. It's a 350-page book entitled Teachers' War: A History of American Public Education. A great item, and there's, I don't like to read to adults, but there's one little paragraph here that I feel compelled to share with everyone. At the end of the book, Dana Goldstein, who's the author, spent a number of years doing the research, and then she makes some suggestions. And some of them are very common sense that we all know. For example, teachers' pay matters. That's important. And then she talks about community involvement and the need to recruit more men and people of color to the profession. Only, according to her, 17% of the teachers in America are male, and only 20-something percent are minorities when the student population is over 40%. So there's a discrepancy there that she is concerned about. But the part that really hit home with me is that, at the end of the book, she places great emphasis on the importance of the school principal. And this is what she says about principals. She says, "Every expert agree that one ingredient all successful schools have in common is a dedicated, highly respected leader who articulate a clear mission teachers believe in and strive to carry out." And I think Dr. Baker will agree with me that in Spotsylvania, we are blessed with dedicated, highly respected leaders who articulate a clear mission that teachers believe in and carry them out. So to all of you, tonight, you get a chance to stand up twice because I want to ask you to please stand if you consider yourself a dedicated, highly respected leader of your school. There you go. Thank you for the work that you do every day. And the other item, Madam Chair, is November 11th is, to many of us, one of the most wonderful day of the year. This is when we pay tribute to the men and women that have served our country. And this year, I have a special request of our principals. Let's dedicate, let's make an effort to dedicate this Veterans Day to the military family. And what I mean by that is that every time a soldier, and I use that in the plural sense, not just GIs, but airmen, sailors, airmen, what have you, everybody in the military, and not just men, because now we have thousands upon thousands of women that get deployed every day. And every time they leave home, there's a vacuum there. And I know, having three sons in my family who have been deployed five times in recent years, what I get from them and their friends is that while they're deployed, they're more worried about their family back home than they are about their own personal safety. We know the sacrifice that spouses of soldiers must make. And I think this year will be a good time for us to pay tribute to the children, the parents, the spouses of our soldiers. We can, I don't know how you want to do it, every school celebrate November 11th differently, but I beg of you, include the spouses of your military men and women, of the parents of your school community, include them in that celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. I'm going to go back to this side. Mr. Blaine.
We're almost at the end of the first month of school. I've had occasion to interact with a number of parents over the last several weeks, and I want to compliment everyone for the very positive comments I have heard about the first few weeks of school, just both boys and girls and mothers and dads. So I think you all deserve a compliment for getting us off to a roaring start for this school year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Dr. Meyer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the board members and the patrons out there for the opportunity that I had to visit Brazil for a month, sharing with my other side of the family, the opportunity for my granddaughter that was christened in Brazil, it was Olinda Panabucul. And it was a great opportunity. We have a lot of things to be thankful for when you see another country, another culture, what they're going through. Thank God we're not going through what they're going through. So we definitely have a lot to be thankful for. Sorry I did miss the convocation. I did hear some very pleasant remarks, and I'm glad that it was well received, and also that there was a very, very smooth opening. With that, thanks to the staff who made that possible and for our parents and their cooperation and our students, that we've gotten off to a very good start. With that, I'm going to pass the baton. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few remarks. First of all, I'd like to thank the Spotsylvania County School Division, in particular Cortland High School, Coach Ronnie Lohman and our principal there as well, Mr. Cliff Conway, for the great support that they provided this weekend as we celebrated the 10th Annual Race Against Teen Violence. A lot of you know the story that it affected me personally. It affected the life of my son. However, we are of the belief that through tragedy, if you do the right things, great things can happen as a result. And so there were over 1,000 runners going out and making a stand against teen violence and violence in our community. And so I salute all of you, but I also thank greatly this school division for its great support, from the administration to the principals and all the teachers that promote what we're trying to do. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart because you know it has a personal meaning to me. With that being said, I want to switch gears and talk about the great efforts that our division is making in terms of the study to address the utilization of our building space through Mosley Architects. I would just ask that folks continue to be patient as we gather solid facts and great assumptions of future growth so that we can have a plan for the plan to use our buildings and property in a way that is most efficient. So we look forward to the results of the study from Mosley Architect, and we're excited to find out what recommendations they have for us. And finally, we all know that we're always in a budget season, and it's coming upon us again. And there are some things that we're going to continue to look for support and partnership with our board of supervisors and ensuring that we're funded in such a way that we can continue to take care of our employees who take care of our children and provide them with the highest quality education possible. So that season is right around the corner. We're going to be looking for input from all stakeholders to provide us input that would be valuable in our preparing of our budget. With that being said, I turn over to the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Ms. Blalock.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. I first want to congratulate Mass Ponics this evening. As you know, I'm very proud of Mass Ponics, and so, well done, Dr. Pasani, with your fine arts team. Just to piggyback a little bit off what Mr. Braswell was talking about, I wanted to share something that really touched me this weekend, is we did go and do the 5K to honor Baron's son that has passed, but also to fight against teen violence. And that's what it was really about, and that's what we were there to do. And I was very moved to see how many of the staff members were out there. I was also very moved to see how many teams from the different schools came. So for those coaches that encourage teams to come out and to fight against teen violence and to stand up for something like that, I want to thank you. It just shows, once again, the importance of coaches in our schools and the mentoring that they're doing. Having, I saw football teams, field hockey teams, a golf team was out there. There was many out there. So we really appreciate their support on Saturday. Not to mention, Dr. Baker and a lot of his cabinet actually ran. I was very impressed with that. So I appreciate seeing that our superintendent and his cabinet, you know, is about the community, and it really makes a difference. I want to remind everyone, it's back-to-school week. Back-to-school evenings are this week, Tuesday night if you have an elementary student, Wednesday night if you have a high school student, and Thursday night if you have a middle school student. You need to check with your school and be sure you show up that evening and see what you can find out about your child's class this year. I know I'll be attending all that I can, for sure, tomorrow night at the elementary level. And with that, I yield the floor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Blalock. Just one thing I wanted to mention to the board members is when we go to the V SBA conference in November, if anyone would be interested in doing the 5K down there, it will be a little bit more chilly than it was here on Saturday. We're going to hope there's no rain. But if anybody'd be interested in doing it, I will walk it. We know that I don't run it, but I will walk it. So if anybody's interested in doing that, just let me know because there's no cost involved. But I have, I just, I know the year's getting off to a good start. I've heard some wonderful things. So thank you for all the work that everyone is doing in the schools and around the schools. And with that, I yield the floor, and I'm going to move on to Dr. Baker.
Thank you very briefly tonight. I believe tomorrow, the state will be sharing some information on the results of on-time graduation rate for the state in the different localities. As we've shared with the board previously at another board meeting, we're proud that our schools, as a system, we're going to tip the 90% this year for the first time since on-time graduation rate became a measure here in the state. We don't know yet if that keeps us at the state pace or still slightly under, but I want to thank our many staff. It's really a K-12 effort when you consider our students continuing to see improvement in that every year, which is not always the case. So congratulations to our many leaders and staff who work so diligently with all of our students to make sure that they have the opportunities to be successful and to graduate on time. Also appreciate the exhibit that is here tonight from Spotsylvania High School, the 75th. It's just a rich history and certainly took a lot of time and effort to put that together, but you can certainly pick up so much good information and also just the sense of pride in that school and what it represents here for Spotsylvania County. So I'd like to thank Mr. Davis and the team that assembled that. I know it was many, many folks. Other than that, I do appreciate the invitation, Ms. Shelley, for many of us to participate in the 5K in Williamsburg in much cooler conditions. We believe that we can do that as long as we adopt the Mr. Wolf method. Which is to equally balance running and walking. And to finish it off with donuts. And so we're looking forward to that. But thank you to everyone from the board who shared some really good feedback and good data. And so I'll yield my comments at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Are there any, item 6.01, are there any board member reports, board committee reports? Okay, none. I'm going to move on to our consent agenda items. Dr. Martin.
We have several items on the consent agenda this evening, so I ask that you bear with me as I read through these. First, bus service for Salem Fields Preschool in Old Greenwich Village neighborhood. Second, memorandum agreement between the Executive Directive Head Start and Spotsylvania County School Board. Three, the memorandum agreement between SCPS Head Start and SCPS Office of Transportation Services. Four, the memorandum agreement between SCPS Head Start and SCPS Health Services. Five, memorandum of agreement between SCPS Head Start and SCPS Early Childhood Special Education. Six, memorandum of agreement between SCPS Head Start Program and SCPS Virginia Preschool Initiative. And seven, memorandum agreement between SCPS Head Start and Virginia Polytechnic Institute and State University for its Virginia Cooperative Extension. And finally, the minutes of the September 14th regular meeting and donations, which are usual and customary. Staff ask that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Madam Chair, can I ask to pull 7.08 to act separately so I can abstain since I wasn't here, rather than have to abstain on the whole agenda item? We could do the minutes separately. Much appreciated.
Okay. Do we need a motion and a vote for that? We're just moving it out. Do we need a motion to take that, to adjust the minutes?
Yes. If I can make that motion, please?
Yes. I'll second. Okay. We have a motion to remove the minutes from the consent agenda and move it on to a separate item. A motion by Dr. Meyer and a second by Ms. Blalock. All those in favor? Aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Approve 7-0. Okay, so we were going to first vote on the consent agenda minus 7.08, the approval of minutes. So everything but 7.08 may have a motion for the consent agenda, please.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. Laura and a second.
Second.
Dr. Meyer. All those in favor of the consent agenda, less aye.
Madam Chair, before we vote on this motion, I would like, just for information purpose, to get a brief overview of item number seven. I think that would be of great interest to the community. And Mrs. Flannard, can you share with us what did this entail?
Head Start and Virginia Tech.
707.
Certainly, I can, but I know that I will not do any justice like Don Miller, who can give you very specifics as well as answer any questions that you have. But I will say that this is our usual and customary that we do every year with this organization. But I do want to give it its justice, so I'm going to ask Don Miller if that's okay with the board.
Yeah. I'm just, honestly, I'm delighted that we have this on the agenda. I just wanted to talk about it.
It is, and it is, it's very, it's a great opportunity.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker. This memorandum we've had for many years, and it is with the Virginia Polytechnic Institute and State University, and it's for their Virginia Cooperative Extension. And it is targeted for low-income families. And the extension service comes to our building, and we have multiple nutrition and finance sessions provided to us by Virginia Extension. Among the most popular is that there's a recipe, and we buy the ingredients for the families, and the extension agent actually cooks the meal on premises. And so then the families can take this home and cook it for their families that very evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions? Okay, we will have a vote on the consent agendas, items one through nine, but not item eight, the minutes. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
All those opposed? 7-0. Okay, now we'll move to 7.08, the approval of the minutes. Mr. Blaine and a second by Mr. Braswell. Okay, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye, please.
Aye. And I will abstain.
Okay, thank you. 6-0 with one abstention. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 8.01, approval of first reading of Policy JL Student Fundraising Activities. Ms. Daniel.
Good evening, Chair, Board, and Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. I'm here tonight because we wanted to add to Policy JL, which is, this is the first reading of School Board Policy JL Student Fundraising Activities and Fundraising by Outside and In-School Organizations. The purpose of this edition is to provide guidance The purpose of this edition is to provide guidance to staff with regards to the utilization of online fundraising websites. Policy J L will include staff fundraising for classroom materials. In short, these changes will provide guidance and provide approval for staff to use online fundraising websites. Additionally, all fundraising forms have been updated to provide greater ease of use depending on the fundraiser. So, we've kind of separated them depending on what the fundraiser is. So, at this time, I would like to ask the school board to approve the first reading as revised.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Have a motion by Dr. Meyer and a second by Ms. Grant. Any discussion? Okay. Mr. Braswell.
My, my question pertains to H, approval time. There's a change in the time that the superintendent designated from a minimum of 30 to 15 days. What is the significance of the decrease in the time?
We, we have just found that when people want to do fundraising, it allows them to do it more quickly so that they don't have to have a full month waiting for approval.
Okay. So, what we're doing is reducing the administrative time on our behalf for the benefit of.
Staff.
Okay. Gotcha.
Ms. Blaylock.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Could you please elaborate on D, as in David? And not that we can't read it in front of us, but this is a question that the public asked me quite a bit. Explain exactly what we approve for door-to-door sales outside the school with students, K through 12, when they're going on behalf of their school?
Well, first of all, they need to have permission from the parent to do that. And we do not allow it to happen unless they've had prior approval through this process. And it's very specialized. We don't encourage our students to do door-to-door fundraising. It's only in certain situations. And there has to be adult supervision at the time that they're doing that.
And this is the area where we have our band will dress in their uniform once a year, and they have one day that they go. And they've found this to be successful in many areas.
That's correct.
Is that correct? So, that is an approved, that is an approved policy that they can do that. We hear, I hear a lot that they're not supposed to. But that actually changed a few years ago.
That's correct.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit, that that is a legitimate fundraiser?
Yes. They, they definitely can do that. It's just that they have to have prior approval. So, what they need to do is work with their school principal. And once it's been approved, it comes to the Administrative Services Building. We sign off on it. That way, we know that that is an approved fundraiser, and we know exactly where they're going. They have to tell us exactly where the route is and where they're going to be so that we can kind of monitor that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor of first reading of approval J L, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Moving on to 8.02, approval of resolution to celebrate the 50th anniversary of Spotswood Elementary School. Let me pull that up. So, Spotswood Elementary School will celebrate 50 years of service to the students and community of Battlefield District this school year. We have a resolution for our board consideration which highlights the events that led to the building and opening of Spotsylvania, Spotswood Elementary School for the students on August 30, 1965. So, this is the resolution. Resolution and recognition of Spotswood Elementary School's 50th anniversary. Whereas, the school board identified a need for a school in the Four Mile Fork area of Spotsylvania County, reported this need to the State Department of Education on a long-range building plan and educational needs report for Spotsylvania County. And on April 17, 1963, appointed four members of the school board to form a committee for the purpose of selecting a suitable site on which to build an elementary school somewhere in the eastern section of the Cortland District of the county. And whereas, in early August 1963, the school superintendent, on behalf of the school board, requested and received approval by the Spotsylvania County School Board of Supervisor, the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors, to purchase the E S Stevens property with adjoining parcels, if indicated, at a cost of $15,000 as the site of the new elementary school in the Four Mile Fork area of Spotsylvania County. Whereas, on November 26, 1963, the school board instructed the superintendent to request that a literary loan in the amount of $450,000 for the construction of the elementary school in the Four Mile Fork area of the county be approved by the Board of Supervisors. And whereas, on March 16, 1964, the school board unanimously approved the selection of Mr. James H. Gould, AIA Architect of Richmond, Virginia, to prepare plans and specifications for the new elementary school in the Four Mile Fork area, and authorized the clearing of the property by Mr. L W. Jones of Partlow, Virginia, at a cost of $150 per acre. And whereas, on June 24, 1964, in a special meeting, the school board unanimously approved the preliminary plans for the new elementary school in the Four Mile Fork area of the county. And October 5, 1964, unanimously adopted the final plans and specifications. And whereas, on September 8, 1964, the school board requested that the Board of Supervisors allow the school board to borrow $225,000 for a period of one year to begin construction of the new school in the Four Mile Fork area, predicated on the receipt of literary loan money for the State Department of Education in the early part of 1965. And on December 7, 1964, the school board received a letter from the Director of Finance at the State Board of Education that literary fund, literary loan funds in the amount of $225,000 were being released immediately with the balance to be released on or about May 1, 1965. Whereas, on June 7, 1965, the school board received a report from the architect that the elementary school in the Four Mile Fork area of the county would be complete by August 25, 1965. And whereas, on August 2, 1965, the school board unanimously agreed to name the new elementary school in the Four Mile Fork area of the county, Spotswood Elementary School, which opened for students on August 30. And now, therefore be it resolved, the school board recognizes Spotswood Elementary School's 50 years of service to the families and students of Spotsylvania County. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I will so move.
I've got Ms. Blaylock, so I'm going to give Mr. Blaine the second. Any comments? Okay. All those in favor of the 50th anniversary resolution for Spotswood Elementary School, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? 7-0. And now, moving on to item 8.03. Approval. Spotsylvania High School will celebrate 75 years of service to the students and community of the Berkeley and Livingston districts this year. We have a resolution for board consideration which highlights the events that led to the opening of Spotsylvania High School for the students in September of 1940. Resolution and recognition of Spotsylvania High School's 75th anniversary. Whereas, the school board invited patrons of the county to present their views with regard to school needs on February 7, 1938, during which patrons from different areas of the county requested that a central high school building located at some central port, point in the county, perhaps the county seat, be built, which would be modern and include trade and vocational programs. And whereas, on April 4, 1938, the school board decided to build a new central high school for at least 50 children with classroom facilities for commercial work, home economics, agriculture, and shop and industrial arts relating to wood, mechanical work, and electricity on three lots of land located between the property of Rand Burris and Zion Church, located at the current Marshall Center. And instructed the state architect to proceed with plans for a two-story brick building for a central high school consisting of 12 rooms, an auditorium, a gymnasium, a cafeteria, locker rooms, and plumbing and heating. And in May 1938, requested a grant to aid in financing said construction from the United States of America through the Federal Emergency Administration of Public Works. And on August 9, 1938, accepted the grant of $60,390 offered by the federal government for the construction of a central high school. And whereas, on February 6, 1939, the school board accepted the bid of $126,350 from O T. Graham &amp; Company, Inc., to build the central high school for which the expected completion date was January 15, 1940. And on November 6, 1939, the school board unanimously agreed to name the central high school Spotsylvania High School. Whereas, on February 3, 1966, the school board met with the Board of Supervisors to review and discuss a comprehensive building program for the school division that includes conveying John J. Ripe Consolidated School and Spotsylvania High School to intermediate schools and building a new senior high school, and passed a resolution to this effect requesting funding for the construction of the new senior high school located in the courthouse area of what is now, what is known as the Cortland District. And whereas, on May 2, 1966, the school board authorized the superintendent of schools and chairman of the school board to enter into a legal contract for the purchase of 38 acres of land owned by W. H. Johnson located on the east side of Route 208 across from the current Spotsylvania High School grounds at a sum not to exceed $50,000. And whereas, on April 3, 1967, the school board reviewed the detailed architectural plans for the new senior high school, authorized the advertisement for bids for the construction of same, and resolved to employ a competent person to serve as the building inspector during all phases of the construction of Spotsylvania Senior High School. And whereas, on May 29, 1967, in a special meeting, awarded the contract for the construction of Spotsylvania Senior High School to Whitlock Construction Company, Inc. of Mineral, Virginia, for the sum of $1,836,600, which opened for students on September 2, 1969, under the name of Spotsylvania Senior High School, on the first day of the 1969-70 year. And whereas, on May 29, 1990, the school board unanimously adopted a position statement on long-range school facilities needs and respectfully requested that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors give this initiative its favorable consideration when considering a bond referendum to fund its own capital projects, and that such referendum should include the opportunity for voter approval of the school board's long-range school facilities program, which will allow for proper planning and construction of schools during the five-year period of 1991 to 1996. And whereas, on June 4, 1990, during a special meeting, the school board unanimously adopted the Long Range Educational Facilities Plan, 1990 to 1995, presented by the superintendent, which included plans to replace the current Spotsylvania Senior High School with another facility to accommodate 1,500 students, converting this current high school facility to a middle school and the middle school facility to an elementary school. And during its meetings, meeting on August 13, 1990, adopted a resolution for a capital improvements bond referendum in the maximum amount of $58,500,000 to finance the cost of land acquisition, construction, enlargement, renovation, and equipping school facilities in conjunction with the Board of Supervisors' request for Virginia Public School Authority to provide financing for such capital projects. Whereas, on February 25, 1991, the school board received a report from staff about the instructional program needed for the new Spotsylvania High School building, which stressed the need for and use of technology for its content and as a tool, an integrated curriculum between subject areas, and for the building to be adaptable and flexible in utilizing the focal points of the school that would include a common area, library media center, and applied technology learning center. And whereas, on April 22, 1991, the preliminary drawings of the new Spotsylvania High School, a reddish brick building of approximately 250,000 to 300,000 square feet with a gymnasium, a two-story academic area, a commons area, and a 1,200-seat auditorium, as well as other areas, was presented by McClintock, Moda Set, and associates to the school board. And whereas, on July 8, 1991, the school board finalized the agreement on the site for the new Spotsylvania High School, which is located on 250 acres of land formerly known as the Mansfield property. And on July 17, 1991, in a special meeting, approved the design development drawings submitted by McClintock, Moda Set, and associates, and authorized the firm to proceed with the construction drawings. And whereas, on February 10, 1992, the school board unanimously named the library of the new Spotsylvania High School in honor of J. Roger Mansfield, and asked that a place be placked on, place, a plaque be placed on display in the library area. And whereas, on April 16, 1992, the school board unanimously voted to award the construction contract to the new Spotsylvania High School to the Whiting Turner Contracting Company in the amount of 16,000, I'm sorry, $16,958,500. And whereas, on December 10, 1993, the school board received the permanent occupancy permit for the building and began moving furniture and equipment into the building. And on December 19, 1993, an open house was held for students, parents, school board members, and members of the Board of Supervisors. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the new Spotsylvania High School located at 6975 Courthouse Road in Spotsylvania opened for students on January 4, 1994. And be it further resolved, that the Spotsylvania County Public School Board recognizes that Spotsylvania High School has been a mainstay of the community for 75 years in three locations of the county, and continues to serve the families and students of the Berkeley and Livingston districts, continuing its legacy to Spotsylvania County. May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Laura and a second by Mrs. Grant, Ms. Grant. Any comments?
Yes. Madam Chair, please. Through the years, I've been very fortunate. In fact, it's one of the things that I thank God for allowing me the opportunity to, to be a knight all these years. And some of the greatest moments in my life have taken place at one of the three locations of Spotsylvania High School. And as you were reading the resolution, I couldn't help but think about Melvin Snow. We still have Snow Hill where the residents of, of the Snow family are still there. I've been inside the house numerous times. When I look here in our boardroom, we have a painting of John Neely, who is the, the father of Bill Neely, our current Commonwealth attorney. Well, when the second Spotsylvania High School was built, they built a house that happens to be, it was painted white because that was the most common color then. So, it became known as the White House. And that's where the superintendent lived, in the White House. And there were times that, and it's well, pretty well-known in the community, that there were times that Superintendent Neely's, his children would play music loud. And of course, the school didn't have air conditioning. So, the teachers at the school will call the secretary of Spotsylvania High School and say, would you call the superintendent's secretary and ask the superintendent to tell his children to lower the volume on their, on their music? You know, so, and that, that used to happen, you know, because his teenage children were out there, you know, playing music. Then, of course, I got to know Errol Dickinson very well through the years. Mr. Dickinson received the first diploma from Spotsylvania High School. And the reason for that was that he was the class president, and that was the tradition. And Mr. Dickinson went on to serve in the House of Delegate for so many years that he used to brag about the fact that every committee he served in, he was the chairman, because he was the most senior member of the House of Delegate. Mr. Dickinson, the, the baseball complex at Mary Washington University is the Errol Dickinson complex. If you go to Germana Community College, the main building, as you approach the Fredericksburg campus, that big building there is the Errol Dickinson building. And of course, Mr. Dickinson is the father of the Commonwealth Governor's School, because he single-handedly made it possible for, for us to get $500,000 from the Virginia Legislature to seed money for the Commonwealth Governor's School. So, those are some of the things that come to my mind. So those are some of the things that come to my mind as I read, as you were reading the resolution. And of course, how can I forget the fact that we move, and I say we because I'm part of that community, we moved into Spotsylvania in the middle of the year, and we went on to win the state championship in football, class of 1994. So this school, I'm very proud to have spent a lot of time in all of those three buildings and gotten to know a lot of the people who graduated from Spotsia High School. In fact, when Mr. Davis, and he does this every year at graduation, he asks the parents there, says, "How many of you, parents and grandparents, have graduated from Spotsia High School?" And half of the people there stand up, you know, because this truly is a community school. I can say without a shadow of a doubt that any native of Spotsylvania that's over fifty years old, they, and graduated from high school, their high school diploma reads Spotsylvania High School. And in my household, we have a few of those diplomas, and we're all very proud of it because from there, the kids went on to have successful career. So, thank you for listening to this long story, but obviously, I love that school and whatever percent to our community. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Laura.
I'd like to just add a comment that, you know, I was involved in the construction of that school and the history behind it, but its legacy is going to carry for many, many more years than seventy-five. When you think of it, the, the structure of, or the layout of Spotsylvania High School has been replicated two times already, in Massaponix and in Riverbend. And that has been the structure and the layout, the way that school is laid out, will continue to live for many, many, many years. And I think it was a wise, wise investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of the resolution for the 75th anniversary of Spotsylvania High School, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to items nine point zero one and nine point zero two, informational items, as all usual and customary. And then now, moving on to item ten point zero one, unfinished business. Anybody have any unfinished business? Item ten point zero two, new business. Is there any, any new business? Okay, moving on to closed, the closed meeting. September 28th, 2015, be it resolved that the board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: to consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees, or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into closed session, please? Ms. Grant, a second by Mr. Blaine. All those in favor of going into closed session?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, seven zero. We are in closed session. Okay, whereas, the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas, Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the School Board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. May I have a motion for the certification, please?
So?
A motion by Mr. Blaine.
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer, and I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Grant, please.
Grant, aye.
Aye.
Blaine.
Braswell, aye.
Shelley, aye. Blaylock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Laura, aye.
Okay, seven zero. Dr. Martin, would you please read the items from the meeting?
Motion is that the School Board accepts the recommendations of the Superintendent for Personnel Appointments, Assignments, and Resignations as presented in closed meeting, and permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
May I have a motion to approve the, the items from the closed meeting?
So moved, Madam Chair.
A motion by Dr. Meyer. I need a second, please. Second by Mr. Laura. All those in favor of the items from the closed meeting, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, seven zero. And may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Chair.
I'm going to give it to Ms. Grant, and the second by Mr. Laura. All those in favor of adjournment, aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, seven fifty-nine. Thank you.